Okay, so item number 10 is the City Fountain Valley Police Department Locker Room Improvement Project. And we have before us our police chief, Matt Shepherd.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight, I stand before you to talk about our police department locker room restroom, gym remodel, or our station remodel, something that we've been working on for quite a few years now, and we're at that final stage to seek some approval from council. So tonight, we're going to talk about the purpose of the project, and the scope, and also how we got to where we're at today. We'll also talk about the bid award, and the fiscal review as well. So I'll get right into it. So our building was constructed in 1984. It's a concrete masonry building with metal studs, and it's in really good condition. And we were looking at the restroom, locker room, gym facilities. It really started out with just the restroom and the locker room. And the conditions are really starting to be dilapidated. It's really kind of outdated. It is not set up for gender diversification. And the ADA compliance in those areas was out of scope. And also, coupled with a project of this magnitude, you have to look at other ADA compliance as part of your overall scope. And so we looked at the front of our police department, which was pretty far out of compliance via ADA. So we made that our, part of our scope of the project as well, to comply with the requirements. The appliances inside, well, not appliances, but it's just the electrical and the, all the water-saving features were not there anymore. You're looking at 1984 equipment. Our CSI upgrade was in need of change. The footprint for our crime scene investigations area was quite large back in the early 80s, because it was hard, tangible equipment that you manipulated and used to achieve a desired product. And now, it's all digital. The footprint required for that has changed since the 1980s. So the footprint is much smaller now. So what a great opportunity to grab some of that usable space and make it work for us. And then, improve morale and employee retention. As I had mentioned, that we've been working on this for quite a few years. We started this in 2018. And you'll see that as we go through some of the markers over the years, and how we got there. But the only thing that has been done in this area, as far as remodel, since 1984, we painted the walls, put some new vinyl squares down in the locker room, maybe fixed a few pieces of grout here and there. And I believe we got new partitions in between the toilets, and then we also went to the waterless urinals. So that is it. Nothing else since 2018. So it's taken a long time to get to where we are today. So the project history. In 2018, we identified this as a capital improvement project, and called it a maintenance project. And that was to come in and paint some walls, change some fixtures, maybe coat some tiling, and just do a few odds and ends. And we quickly realized, by looking at it and speaking with professionals in the field, that wasn't going to work. We were completely outgrowing my women's facility. The lockers in the women's restroom were much smaller than the men's. They still are today. I'm bursting at the seams in there, so we needed to do something. So in 2019, we changed it, the scope of it, and made it a CIP project. And then, in May of 2019, we went out RFP and hired, through a process, for an architect. We hired TR Designs. And we're very happy with their engagement and work with us over the years in developing this product, or project, and getting it to a final stage. They were with us the entire time. There were several changes in direction that we went forward with, and I was very pleased with their work on this project, as was our city's engineering staff and public works staff, who all worked hand in hand. And then in 2019, the direction pivoted to save some money and some maintenance cost, and that was directly related to looking outside of the original scope and trying to, because we figured out real quickly, what we were trying to do wasn't going to work. We didn't have a large enough footprint to make the women's facilities conducive for what we needed it to do. We, the question came up, well, why can't we just give the women smaller lockers and make it fit in that footprint? And I immediately said, that's not a good idea. I'd have mutiny on my hands. And then, in 2020, COVID hit, and then the project was put on hold. And then, after that, we got it going again. We brought the stakeholders in again. We brought them in in the beginning, and helped with some concept designs, some material selections. And we brought them back in, because we were changing the scope of it. And we wanted everybody to be a participant in making sure that we were going forward with the right direction. And then, in the latter part of 2021, we considered authorizing the CSI room for the gym. So the room immediately behind the women's restroom locker room facility was the police department's gym, accessible from both rooms. And it was a pretty good-sized footprint. And that was the area that we elected to move over into our CSI room, and we increased that space for the gym. And then, we had a significant amount of footprint to work with the women's, and it gave us what we needed. And then, in August '21, we got the stakeholders together again. We gave them three concept plans. And we asked all of our labor groups and the employees in the building to vote on this. Which one do you like? And it was pretty unanimous in the outcome of that. And that led us to a final product that our architects brought forward. And then, in 2022, the design was complete, and we went out to bid. So this is what it looked like, or it's what it looks like right now. Urinals, offering no privacy, dilapidated, you can't see it, but a lot of the baseboards fallen off, some tiles are falling off the wall, sinks that are out of ADA compliance, benches next to the lockers that are out of ADA compliance, lockers that we're using, and this is the men's side, this is the bigger ones. Everybody's typically assigned two lockers, because the equipment that we carry nowadays is overwhelming for the single locker. So the men's restroom facility locker room was a mess. And here's some more of the men's, I'm sorry, this is the women's restroom, older type partitions. And then, the photo on the right is their locker room. So that's the doorway you're looking into. So you walk in there, you turn to the right, you've got about six, maybe seven lockers on your right. You turn to the left, same amount on the left-hand side. Nowhere near the space that we need. And you can see the lockers are much smaller than what the men's are. So we were bursting at the seams. Completely not ADA compliant with the benches that are there. There's definitely not enough room, as is the restrooms where, the stalls were out of ADA compliance as well. So this is a diagram. The dark shaded area is the, is the original scope, the original proposal. The, this area right in, can you guys see my cursor move?
Yeah.
Okay. This area right here is the women's locker room, right in here. And then, this is the men's, and this is the gym. And then, this was one room across. We were looking at making this a single-stall restroom, which has now been converted to one of my staff members' offices. And then, in the red, is the CSI area, the footprint that we were going to, we were going to grab onto.
Chief Shepherd, we have a question from-
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question, just as a point of orientation. So if we're, is, on the left side, is that kind of the front that we're looking at from here? And is this the entire second floor? Is that what we're looking at?
So you're looking at a blueprint of the, it's going to be the west, the southwest corner of my building. If you were looking out, the building's directly behind the police department from the last building, you'd be looking right at the corner of my building. And the gym is right at that corner.
Okay.
Here's the gym. The Wells Fargo Bank Lot is over here.
Oh, I see.
The Service Road is back here.
So City Hall's, where's City Hall?
Tap Road.
City Hall is over here.
Over here, okay.
Way over here.
Got it, got it. Okay.
So here's the hallway that walks down my, you can get down my, my police department, and you go out the back steps into the Wells Fargo lot.
Got it. Okay, all right, thank you.
So here's the existing gym, women's facility, men's facility, the proposed room that we weren't going to use, or that was not being used. And then, this is the scope of the footprint that we were able to grab. So this is our final layout, what we came up with. As you can see down here, the women's restroom is much larger, restroom locker room facility is much larger. The lockers are all the same as what is in the men's. The men's lockers, they changed locker designs, but we didn't lose any locker space, because we reconfigured these smaller ones into larger lockers. These were underutilized. And then, the new gym facility increased in size by about 200 square feet. Our lieutenant's office is going to be right here, right where the work is being done. And so they're going to be able to have eyes on what's happening. And this is our new footprint for our CSI room. All of the equipment in here will be upgraded to new stuff, so we're set moving forward in the future. And this is a rendition of a final product. This is actually looking into the women's restroom. You can see what the lavatories are going to look like, with some mirrors and some accent tiles behind it. Just off to the side of it, there's a shower back behind it. And then, over to the right, you can see the partitions that are there, and then the new lockers with the benches built into the locker is in the background. So all of our labor groups, employees, were part of this process in the beginning, in the material selection, the scope of the project, and then also, in the end, when we made some changes, revisions to the plan, they were part of that as well. And on top of that, we hit the ADA compliance, we correct our steps out front, we correct the ramp out front, and we will be able to defend that in the future, so that we don't fall into that ADA compliance trap. So that is my part of the presentation. I have the Public Works Director here with me, and she's going to talk a little bit about the finances, and also some of the, what was the other thing?
Budget.
Budget, there you go.
Budget, and program.
Yeah.
And how we're going to execute.
And also, the bid. Did you guys have any questions for me while I'm standing up here? Yeah?
Yeah, actually, I do, a couple, too. So first, how many female-to-male officers do we have? What's the ratio, or what's the total number?
I'm at about a 25% ratio. And that number fluctuates year to year. Could I get to 50/50? Yeah, I very well could. And I'll tell you right now, if I was to hire two or three more females, I'm going to have to kick some of my non-sworn out of those lockers. We just don't have room.
And then, I know the IT room is on the other side, but I understand we just downsized the room needed in there. Is there additional space there that you could potentially-
I don't think we downsized any room in the IT area. I believe we're reconfiguring it to get an office out of a manager, or, I'm sorry, a director's office out of that area. But if there was room available there, it's too far away from this project. We really need both restrooms very close to where the gym facility is.
I was thinking more of the CSI area, maybe if that could be used, and give you more room back there, potentially, just to-
We believe that what we've come up with, with the architect, is a very sound footprint. We have freezers for our DNA collection. We have all of our evidence storage areas, dryer facilities, some fans, ventilation systems for fingerprinting, and then a couple computer workstations, and that's really the area that we need.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Shepherd? Thank you, Chief Shepherd.
All right. I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Hagee and Lee, and I'll stand by for some additional questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to finish up the presentation tonight. And thank you, Chief, for a thorough overview of how we got here. So I want to take you to the next level here. So now that the project was complete design, we want to make sure that we follow public contract code, and we went to competitive bidding process. We put it out onto our Planet Bids on December 19th. And since, because of the holidays, we put it out a little bit longer than we typically would. So we opened the bids on February 22nd. So the city received 10 bids, which we think is actually a very competitive and very, it was a robust bid process. So bids range from 3.5 million to about 5.2 million. So we think that that's actually, but first top three was actually very tight in bid amounts. So we think that they really sharpened their pencil, and they try to give us the best price possible. So here's a summary of bids. We have 10. So unfortunately, due to the labor market and the climate for construction materials and commodities, Classic Engineering and Construction, they requested to withdraw their bid. And likewise, in the 11th hour of Friday late afternoon, our Chico, who was going to be awarded a contract, they requested to withdraw their bid. So we scrambled to make sure that we actually wanted to have their lowest bidder be available, and they agree that they want to take the project on. They're actually here tonight to, I will introduce you after the presentation. So they're here, and their bid is approximately $3.5 million. So from the Classic Engineering, the low bid, to JR Universal, the price difference is only about $11,000, which I think is a very, very competitive bid. So we know that when there's a huge difference between first and second, we think that something's unbalanced. But in this case, we think that all three bids really sharpened their pencils and tried to give us the best price possible. So we recommend awarding it to JR Universal, and they're here today. And I want to go over our project budget. As you know, over the last, the project started in 2018, obviously with the maintenance project, about, I think, $50,000. And over the years, during COVID, project was put on hold. And then now, in 2023, construction climate have really changed. So the price is a little bit more than what we had initially estimated. Therefore, staff is requesting additional budget amendment as a part of this action. But I also want to highlight the fact that we have a project and construction management and inspection services through InnerWest. And InnerWest was selected in 2019 as a part of, actually, 2021, as a part of on-call, RFQ, requests for qualifications. And they were listed, they are show-listed for their excellence in overseeing construction of facilities, or large facilities such as police and fire stations. So we thought that they would be a great fit for this project. So their fee is about $315,000. And I want to explain why we think that the staff recommends their services. When the construction goes into effect, when they do a demo, and they're taking down walls and such, and they try to find where the utilities are, sometimes the plans are as good as we have in terms of what's back there. But sometimes, over the years, there's some maintenance improvements such, that's not quite well documented. So we will find, or we'll find things that's not planned. But in order for contractor to have immediate feedback, we need someone actually watching and working with them, and bring us, hey, we found this. What do you want us to do? Let's go back to the architect, and let's see what we need to do to either revise the plan, or come up with a solution. So that is really critical in making sure that we have a successful project, and we don't hold up the contractor. So I think InnerWest will do a great job at doing that. And as such, we have other project costs, material testing, and we have a little bit of minimal cost for printing costs as well. And typical of all public works contract, when council awards the contract, council authorized me 10% of the total project cost, just in case we need to issue a change order, because we can't just let the contractor sit there, because time is money. And obviously, we, council meets only twice a month. We don't want contractor to wait, you know, two, three weeks until they have an answer. So that gives me an allowance to make prudent decision. And we are very prudent about how we negotiate with contractor, to make sure we get the best price possible for the city. So our total project budget is about $4.47 million. And we are asking council to consider, consider this project. And obviously, its initial project budget was 3 million, so we're asking for additional about $1.4 or $1.5 million. So this is our staff recommendation, accept the bid. So this is our staff recommendation, accept the bid.